It's seven thirty, folks. You guys ready? Are you ready? Ready, horse? It is seven thirty. So, welcome to tonight's scheduled meeting of the zoning board of appeals. I'll just go through the manner in which we conduct these meetings. The petitioner is named and called to the front, just right there. The petition is read by a member of the board. The petitioner has then granted the floor to present the more details and exhibits and otherwise state their case on their own behalf. The discussion will be opened up to members of the public. I asked that, we asked that, you know, any questions, comments, everything, I just direct it to the board. We try to avoid talking to each other. We have to keep it through with the board, one conversation at a time. The board will discuss and cast a vote as necessary. So, before we get started reading and calling up, we have, it seems to be variance night here. Everybody, I don't know if you noticed at all, but variances are granted sparingly in the state of Massachusetts and here on the board. We have to uphold the laws of both the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and, of course, the bylaws of the town. So, I just wanted to make it clear to everybody, there's a lot of informals here and some others, some too that are on the agenda. But just keep in mind that we're here to uphold those laws. They, we have, they're laws. It's not like we can say, oh, maybe, yeah, maybe no, we have to go by the laws. So, with that said, the first one on the agenda is William Curry. Why don't you have a seat at that desk? Chris, would you mind reading that into the minutes?
Pursuant to Massachusetts Journal Lodge, Chapter forty-eight, Section eleven, notice to hereby giving that the zoning board of appeals behold of public hearing Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at seven thirty P M. at Clinton Town Hall, two forty-two Church Street, second floor, conference from Clinton, Massachusetts regarding application for William Curry, twenty West Wedge Road, Clinton, Mass., zero one five one zero, seeking a variance under Section forty-one thirty, the Clinton zoning bylaws are releasing frontage to build a farmer's porch, and plans exceed the thirty-five feet front setback approximately twenty inches at twenty West Wedge Road, Clinton, Mass., zero one five one zero. The parcel can be further identified in accessory map one twenty-one, parcel four three twenty-three. Interested priorities may review copies of the petition and company plans and documents to the town parks office during regular hours. Any person wishing to be heard should be present in person at said time.
Thank you, Chris. All right. Mr. Curry?
Yes, thank you, gentlemen. Can I just give you a couple of photos to?
Sure. Yeah, so I had some plans drawn up and the builder came down to get a permit and he was told, you might want to get a survey. Looks like I might be close to the line. It looks like I am about twenty inches into the setback. I have measured from the actual foundation of the house, the part that sticks out the most, that little bump out. And again, I am about one point seven feet into the setback. I've measured from that foundation to the curving, I'm actually got about fifty-four feet. So, if you take away the actual, where the setback ends, I still have an additional eleven feet to the curb, which I know is like the right of way. Now, I have to pick you in a neighborhood, I have no sidewalks on my property. The sidewalks have been installed, they're on the other side of the street. I have no utilities in the front yard, there's no gas, everything's on the gas sewer and water on the right side, electric cable, everything is in the rear. And if you look at the lot map, it's kind of a unique setup up here. I'm in the middle of the circle and that front half of the circle, if you look at the lot map, this one here. If everybody has one. So, I'm that front half of that inner circle, so I really have no neighbors to my left and right. I just have neighbors to my rear. So, obviously, being a porch, there's no walls, I'm not putting, pouring a foundation, it's not going to affect any sight lines, nobody's vision. There's three other homes in the neighborhood that have farmer's porches, so it's not like I'm doing something different that's in the neighborhood, it's nothing detrimental to the neighborhood. I love my neighbors, I wouldn't do anything that would affect anything to their homes as well. So, basically, I'm just, like I said, I'm about twenty inches shy of what the plans call for.
Mm-hmm. All right. Twenty inches is still missing it, right?
I hear you.
Yeah.
Okay. But again, when they, just to make it clear, when they design a road, if I understand it correctly, it's initially fifty feet wide, road becomes twenty-five feet wide, then it's, depending on how the road enters, it could have twelve and a half, twelve and a half feet on either side, could be ten feet on one side, fifteen feet on the other side, if, depending if the road is centered in that original plan. I'm correct there. Because it looks like the road's pushed over a little bit according to the lot map, where I'd have a little bit more room there. Like, if you look at the road, at least on the map anyway, it's much further to the other side of the road than my lot, so I would think there'd be a lot more room on that side of my lot, if you will. I believe if we were talking about what the actual frontage is, it would be the building inspector that'd make that determination. We wouldn't be able to just, you know, have a look at this and say, oh, I think you're actually, he said you're not within, he had variance, we have to go by his word.
And so, the twenty inches, is that something you cannot, can't reduce the size of?
It could have just been much smaller than we were hoping to build, that's all. You're gonna spend that kind of money, I was hoping to get the full idea of the plans they originally drew.
Yeah. So, the uniqueness of the lot, I don't know if anybody here disagrees with me, but there are a lot of, the two behind you are fairly unique. Or, not unique, but share in their strangeness, I guess?
It is kind of a odd setup, I never really seen it like.
So, it's tough to say that yours is the only one, if yours was, if everything, if they were all rectangle around you and yours looked like it does, then we would say that's quite unique and is different than others in the neighborhood or general zone. And so, we could defend a variance. But I don't know that, I don't know, do you guys think that that's a unique?
I drove up there, I don't see anything unique about it for the first part, and the second part would be substantial hardship. You could build a porch, you did just tell us that. Right away, and this would be a real quick looking at it, not unique property, no hardship. I looked up, the state has held that frontage two percent, it is not diminutive, you need a variance, so you said you're twenty inches, that'd be more than two percent right there. So, this would be an almost impossible one, based on what I saw, just because, as the chairman said, we're backed by a state statute. You would need to meet a soil-shaped topography, soil-shaped topography matches neighborhood, the hardship when you could already build a porch, even if you couldn't build a porch, you're already making use of the land with the house, so it'd be, I don't know how we would find that either. Not to be the bearer of bad news here, but just right off the bat, I don't see either of those elements being met. And I, you're the third element, substantial detriment, like, I don't think it'd be a detriment at all, I think it'd be totally fine with the neighborhood, but unfortunately, since it wouldn't be the other two, we wouldn't even get to the third.
Yeah, it's, they're conjunctive, you have to meet all three criteria. And I don't see, but somebody can convince, can you, do you want to convince us otherwise? It's.
I've said all I could say, I'm just surprised, I guess, yeah.
Yeah.
It's very, this is one of the more common things, priorages, porches, especially when you're very close, because, you know, again, we have no say, the planning board makes the rules, we have to follow them the same way we follow for any person, if we, you know, if we deviate from one person, we say, well, it's only twenty inches, no one's going to care, it's just a porch, it was fine, fits the neighborhood. You know, we're going to do that for everyone who came here. So, these ones are always tough, because, you know, not just right off the bat, like I said with that, which is, this, to me, is just a quick, I don't see how it can be, we could uphold this if we're challenged. Okay?
Right, so would someone like to make a motion? It needs to be in the positive, so.
Oh, do we get public to?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Is there anybody here from the public wishes to speak about this? No? Okay, so we need a motion to grant this. Go ahead, Walter.
I'll make a motion that we grant this.
Okay.
Variance.
Well, we have a motion, do we get a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? All right, so it's three to two against, again.
All right.
Sorry about that. It's tough. All right. Next on the agenda, Nancy Moran? Hi. Why don't you come on up, have a seat? Chris, would you mind reading that into the minutes?
Pursuant to Massachusetts Journal Lodge, Chapter forty-eight, Section eleven, notice to hereby giving that the zoning board of appeals behold of public hearing Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at seven thirty P M. at Clinton Town Hall, two forty-two Church Street, second floor, conference from Clinton, Massachusetts regarding application of Nancy Moran for, is it Eileen?
Eileen?
Eileen.
Eileen, okay. Eileen Avenue, Clinton, Mass. zero one five one zero, seeking a variance under Section forty-one thirty, the Clinton zoning bylaws are releasing a sidewalk requirement due to the topography of land. The applicant is proposed to enter garage with accessory impairment from the right corner is approximately four to five, four feet, five inches less than the setback requirement of twenty feet, hopefully, in the four Eileen Avenue, Clinton, Mass. zero one five one zero. Parcel can be further identified in accessory map one twenty-nine, parcel twelve seventeen. Interested priorities may review copies of the petition and company plans and documents to the town parks office during regular hours. Any person wishing to be heard should be present in person at said time.
Thank you, Chris. All right.
Can I bring up some plans?
Sure.
I want you to move down to three feet, three inches.
Yeah. We can probably share this one more time. Rure yourself up. Yes.
My hardship is, these are my stairs. Can't even figure out how many times I've fallen down them. Only basically just one, with the new front entrance to the house.
Is there anybody here from the public to, have you seen these plans?
No.
Not, not the large scale plans.
Would you mind putting one over on that desk or that table over there, so people can go take a look at it? Thank you. So, feel free to go look at those.
Tim, what was she saying about the driveway?
So, she had given away or sold or whatever, deeded over a portion of her property to these folks, so they could have a drive.
Okay. Obviously, you can't self-create hardship, just.
Right, so, but, okay, so she said, so it sounds like I followed up in this regard, because now I'm looking to do this and. All right, and what's the setback there, twenty-five or so? All right, what's this to represent? This is the stairs that she's commonly using. All right, so. All right, and those stairs are someplace over there?
Yeah, the stairs, the stairs, basically, you can look at the picture, it shows, I'm looking at the steps. This, it's on the grass part, this is where the steps are. So, I'm not really going off the drive, don't yet, I don't have to change any.
So, you all have to want to use these steps that you're following anyway?
So, the hardship wouldn't have to be with the soil shape or topography, the steps wouldn't qualify as being difficult to use. So, hardship also can't be self-created. But that'd be, that would be part of the property itself, not the land. So, soil shape or topography for your land would have to differ from the other land. And the thing with the driveway would be, we consider that self-created. And you need a hardship, so you're already making use of the property as is, because it's a home, and could you build a single garage?
I could, but it only defeats the purpose of.
So, hardship can't be.
Because I want the accessory.
Yes, so hardship also can be to an individual's hardship. It would have to be that any person who bought this property would be unable to make substantial use of the property, but for us, granted, we have a deviation from the variance law.
The new law, like, lasts for eighty years.
It would not go for this, though. So, eighty would be a separate, that'd be a separate thing. This would be very, like we said with the first person, this would be very tough, too, because you're already making use of the property, the property, the topography, soil shape are more or less similar to otherwise the area. I just don't see how you could build a single garage, you want to build two. Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that, this is very, not, I don't know how we're gonna.
I need so many feet to get current in the larynx. We've configured it numerous times, and like I said, I've managed to kind of cut it down a little bit, but it's not, it's still three feet.
There's not a lot here for us to go on, as far as granting a variance, sorry to say.
Trust me, I don't enjoy, like, I don't enjoy telling him, no, I wouldn't enjoy telling you, no. I could, the porch seems fine with his house, this garage seems fine with your house, but we're under very strict state statutes. And my personal fear is if I start saying yes to people, because, again, not super, I'm just for you.
And it feels good.
Yeah, it'd be great, I'd love for you to be happy here, but I don't know how I could defend that decision, knowing the case law, knowing what statutes are. I see that, and I said, there's no way, it's indefensible, because you're already getting use of the property, you can build a single car garage if you want to, if you could build a single car garage, you probably already get used to the property, but there's probably another objective anyway. But let's say you just, you already could build one. I, you know, listen, it wouldn't get upheld, would be my fear, that if, and if I'm granting something that I know is not going to get upheld, you know, I'm basically not doing what I'm supposed to be doing here.
Yeah. That is well said. You understand our position. So, this goes to, this would, even if we were to snake it by, that's all it would be, is trying to get something by. And then it goes to Worcester, and they would remand it right back to us, they would, what are you guys doing, what's wrong with you? It's not, it's not defensible.
And we're sympathetic to some, we have, we've told so many people now that have, you know, which I hate, again, I take no joy in this, trust me, but people with very sympathetic stories, and they just want to help someone in their family, they're doing a very noble thing, and it's like, well, we have to.
Yeah, elderly parents, and they want to do an apartment for an elderly, it's a nice and noble thing to do.
There are accessory structure laws, but this would be different, because you'd be requiring variance here, but you can now, as of basically, I think you only need a minimum, you don't even need a, whatever we have, the four on five, but you only need three on five, I think, now for accessory units. But you'd have to still be within the confines of zoning by us. But if there's somewhere else, you could attach an accessory unit there, there's much more leeway with new laws of February first.
It looks like the left side of the structure is probably an entryway or a breezeway, do you have any ability to shrink that breezeway, just to keep the?
Yeah. Yes. Yes, so do members of the public, do you have any interest in speaking up at this time?
Preparations were, yeah, where the garage is going to be built for a two-family garage, and then the apartment and the balcony, and all the runoff is on there. And if you look at this topography, all of it comes toward going to the beginning, and now it's going to be protruding more towards the property line, and it's going to be, you know, we have water coming down the driveway from Eileen ass because of heavy rains and stuff. There's one drain in between Nancy and her's driveways, and when it's heavy rain, it doesn't go into the drain, it comes down the property lines. And we're just concerned about runoff.
All right.
From the building.
All right, thank you for that, what's your name?
Robert, again, we're next, or neither.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Robert.
And you said too, you used to own land over here?
Yes.
This would just be, it would be tough, I feel bad telling you this, but this is just me personally, I can't speak for anyone else, but I just don't see how I could find a hardship here for this, especially given that you could build a single car garage. Because we've, and we're not, we'd give a little, we, you know, within the law, if there's a possibility that, hey, maybe this, this is something that can work, but this.
What about room out back, out here? All right, well.
As always, talking to the planning boards, you could say, hey, if you change it to fifteen feet, you know? You know?
Yes. All right, so I think, is there any further discussion? All right. Walter, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the variance.
Okay, as, as, as.
As presented.
Petitioned, okay.
Yeah.
Now, we have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. No further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? All right. Sorry. Again.
I hope the architect can drop something that can work, I mean.
All right, good luck. All right. All right, the next is, or the rest of on tonight's agenda are informal, and so Nina and Alessandro Souza, Vale Street.
Yeah.
All right, so we don't have anything to read into the minutes, and this is, as we just said, informal, so why don't you come on up? Well, if you want to come on, the only one who bites here is this guy, so.
So, we live at forty-three Vale Street, our existing lot, our house is here, it's a two-family. We live downstairs, my mom and stepfather live upstairs. There's an existing dilapidated garage, which is still functioning, but needs to come down. Our proposal is to build a larger garage setback. According to my husband, who's a contractor, he says that we're within all the property lines. The issue is that the structure, based on what we've been working on, is higher than the height requirement, because we are looking to make an apartment above the my grandfather, which I know, hearing what you said, is the noble thing to do, but we're also open to hearing from you guys. So, what we're looking for is an approval or recommendation to move forward with height, not necessarily.
Yes. What is the height requirement?
I think it's thirty.
I don't know if there's a separate one for.
Yeah, the accessory has that lower height.
Twenty-five percent of the required yard area is occupied, we think we're at about that, and then ten feet from the principal building, which my husband says it is, I don't do math, I do people, because I work in HR. So, it's really height.
Do you know what the height is now? The accessory height?
I know.
Twenty-seven feet total.
Okay.
I don't remember, I remember we, remember we had the one, they wanted to build a garage, and I guess, is it the accessory height that stopped them?
Fifteen?
I think it's fifteen.
Fifteen, okay.
Accessory.
Okay, that sounds right, okay. So, this is what, twenty-seven feet, you say? Twenty-seven feet, you believe?
Yes. So, it's going to be, it does not care for him, so by the time we have to do like a retaining of like three feet, it's not going to show like it's twenty-seven.
They take the average of the lot or something like that?
They might, Tim, they might. How is it, how is the garage now? Yeah, how is it now? Okay, so to the peak? Okay, so the peak is only nine feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you can see here, like, it's completed over here. So, this makes this, so when I did the survey, I thought about trying to get the garage kind of in the same location, but then looking at all the setbacks and stuff, like, doesn't make sense.
Right.
Plus, I would have a hard time to keep the garage by the law.
Right, yeah, plus you can build right there.
There's a driveway right here, I shared with my neighbor.
Yeah.
Sorry, like, everything, you have to hold, but the height, because we plan to, like, build, like, a little apartment.
Right.
Yeah, so there's a reason you need the height is for the apartment.
Yes.
Right.
And I want to do the garage top, even though I have a contract, so I have a whole end, so I need a garage, even though it has to be like twelve feet, image of it right there.
And I did find, Tim, you were right, accessory building, not more than fifteen feet in height above the average grade level around the structure. Unless it's a horseback.
Right, so, so if you find the average height, you can be fifteen feet above that, of the lot, because I'm assuming a lot of slopes up?
Yes.
So, it's.
So, it's, it's straight, but then there's an area that rises up to, not going to go there, a bunch of garbage from the neighborhood, which this structure would actually hide that fat and prevent their.
So, what we're getting at is, you're going to have to, so first of all, you wouldn't get, and I'm just shooting out, you probably wouldn't get a variance for this. Okay, because you can build something and use it, and as Chris has pointed out, if you were listening earlier, it can be used, it's being used, there's nothing there. Okay. So, you got to keep it at fifteen feet or under. Great, but now what you can do is look at the lot, you know, search, get the survey of the lot, find out what the average height, you know what I mean? So, it might not necessarily be fifteen feet from right where it is. It's, you know, because it's from behind.
Okay.
You know, and so, I don't know how that gets figured, so you. You know, and so I don't know how that gets figured, so you you would have to probably talk to a land surveyor.
Okay, that's fine, we have someone that we can reach out to and speak to them about potential options.
But don't, I I would recommend against seeking a variance, spending all the time and money and effort and everything like that. If you don't need that.
Okay.
Or in other words. You shouldn't need a variance to do that, does that make sense? You you're gonna build it.
Sure.
No higher than fifteen feet. Because if you come here looking for a variance, it's. Just not speaking for everybody here.
Right, right.
It'd be very tough. You're the last two, it's those, those.
Just from my knowledge, because this is the first time we've ever done this, and it was the building inspector that said, go in for a formal, ask them. Discuss as a family. Is that, is it town by town, or does it depend on?
The chairman is allowed to decide whether or not you can come informally.
Okay.
Yeah, so a chairman for a different town could say, no.
You're talking about this in this meeting?
No, I just mean in terms of is the variance applicable to each town.
So special permit would be kind of discretion by us, we only determine whether or not it's gonna be more detrimental for the neighborhood variance. It's all case law, state statute, if it doesn't mean it, we have no say, even if it does, the best thing that ever happened to this town, we would say no, so.
So our plan now to move forward is speak to a land surveyor, assess probably the highest part of the law and then welcome there.
You you wanna know what the average? And I don't know how it gets better.
Of course.
But you could point that that bylaw out and just say, we're able to only go fifteen feet above average height of the lot.
Okay.
And so there'll be.
Average height of the lot, okay.
And the other consideration is how the actual lot is, if you're able to recess the garage level and, you know, if you're up on a hill. So the drive-in for the garage is, you know, six feet below the grade.
Aren't as high as the back.
Right. That way there, when you come above ground in the back, you're not twenty-seven feet up now, you're, you could be at the fifteen.
Yeah, because our house, as it stands today, there's a retaining wall, it's lifted up and we like look down on there.
Right, so it sounds like you may have an ability to recess that, you know, excavate the structure.
All right.
The good thing is you already have one there, so you're not, you can build on that same footprint with a special permit.
Yeah. Which we like, but at the same time, with the cars that we have and sharing that easement, it just makes it difficult to navigate. So we're trying to get rid of that crappy structure, push that. And make it easier for us, but also more accessible for our neighbors at the same time. Okay.
All right.
Do you got what you need for? Thank you.
Welcome, good luck.
Thank you.
Jim and Joanne Souza. Hi folks.
Hi gentlemen.
Thank you.
What's that? Hey Greg. And so this.
All right.
So this is.
Okay. Bring by there a million times.
Everybody this.
Yeah, great running spots.
I'm trying to think of. This would be. Yeah, I lived on Wayne.
This is a, this is a tending situation because there's two houses on this property. There's one at one eighty-nine Park Street, which is a. Two-story home and there's one, there's a mobile home on the, on the opposite side of Park Street. That sits on a little, a little thing of. We are proposing to. Extend. Terrence Avenue to build. Two homes.
On the top, on the side of like work.
One was out as a dead end with the last house proposed.
And this, this was done in nineteen eighty-one. And one of the lots is a lot that Suzas live on right now, presently. The slope of the property rises up slightly up. Up from Terrence Ave up to Park Street. And it's wide open, there is no more, there are no more greenhouses here now. There is a sore line running through the property, and so also you say a water line.
There was a water line, which my family gave bearings as to back in the fifties. So they built it out and they could build Wayne House.
Oh, easements.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I was gonna say it's pre-zoning, so there definitely was not a variance, but yes, okay.
An easement to go through our property to get down the reservoir. And from what I understand, I've been paying taxes. All the way down to that, the pump house at the bottom of the hill. Yeah, so you know, I don't know, so he's professional, like no one.
So, so we, we are proposing to extend Park Street. To the MDC water line. Property line. And the reason being is because, because the town uses that, uses their land to get to the pump house anyway. So there's no reason why Park Street should not be extended. Right up to the MDC property. And that would give us, and that would give us coverage. For the mobile home, which they would like to split out. Because they don't want to have two, two houses on their property. It's a wood here, white store. But you'll see a bedroom driveway. That's the way of one eighty-nine Park Street now is. Is the front.
That's the stock of most at the end of the road.
Oh, yeah, I'm very familiar with.
People walk up at the top of the hill, didn't you?
Wasn't so much, little far away, but I just, I used to run up that way a lot, so.
So, so, so we realized I've lost three, one, four. It varies for frontage. If you look on the accessories. They say that. The existing house that one eighty-nine Park Street had a hundred and ten bigger frontage, but actually it only had a hundred. So it, so like it was never, never illegal, you know, frontage law.
So is this, this one lot right now?
This, this is all, all one lot, everything you see around here is one lot right now.
All this is one lot.
All this is one.
So if you subdivide it though, you'd be creating lots that would be, that would be non-performing, right?
Correct.
Which I, I thought you just, you can't do that in the state. I'd wait to call in infectious and it wouldn't be, can't make a lot, you can't subdivide a lot to make non-performing lots. Did the planning board mention this, sir?
We explained, we explained to them that there were, there was some barriers that were leaving. But like if you. But if you go down. From this locust. Toward the park, there are a lot of lots that have less than sixty feet.
No, but, but no, what I'm saying though is I don't think in the state in the Commonwealth and Massachusetts, you can subdivide a lot. If it creates non-performing lots.
Yeah, no, you can't.
You can't.
You can?
You can't. I, I have cases right here.
I know case law is saying you can't, but I'm not sure, is this currently, I'll have to see what you have.
This was all greenhouses, so he's calling it a lot, but it was all the greenhouses.
But all the, all that matters now is what it is currently, so.
Just a wide, like patch of land that I wanna give two lots to my.
But would any of those lots be conforming?
Why wouldn't they?
Because they have the, they won't have the frontage, that's why you're here.
So can I, can I see the, can I see the case law you have them and suggest otherwise?
Well, this is, this is a maxile.
Okay, well, I mean, they're definitely, I know if you have a conforming lot, you can't subdivide and create a non-performing. But let's.
Does that make sense, what he's saying? So you, this, you're you're gonna make, so this is all one piece, all one lot. You're gonna create two lots.
Five lots, actually.
And here, and these two lots here, and then another lot here. And and none of them are going to have the frontage, and that's why you're asking for a variance. Well, this one has frontage. This one has frontage. And this one.
This one here. Sits on a finger of property that we would like to.
Oh, this one won't have front, even though you're going to extend that.
Park Street, yes.
That won't have frontage, and then these two won't have frontage.
Right.
Okay.
This one never was a legal lot, it only had a hundred feet of frontage. And we're just. Proposing to have each lot here at eighty-one feet, we're bleeding.
So none of these are lots right now, is that correct?
No, except for the whole. It's just one big lot.
Right.
So.
My understanding though is.
One whole lot.
The planning board signed this. These two.
A lot that you were, did not, that would even conform. You just subdivide it all you want.
Okay.
But.
We're asking for.
My understanding of the law is you can't subdivide and create.
Frontage.
And if two lots.
This one, this one.
Create a.
This one, which is.
So I just don't know what the planning, A, if they're aware of that, and B, what they, they told you.
This one doesn't have an. On a square.
Which again, it would be.
Right, but it's, it's part of an existing law, it's not a separate law right now.
Or for land that I can't build on.
That would have to go talk to accessory.
Yeah.
But, um.
He's the one who wants to buy me here.
But I'm just saying, my understanding from case law, I know it's a case on Brookline is the most recent, is that you cannot subdivide a lot. Creating non-performies, not creating non-performing, conforming lots. So I would just have to see, I guess we have to talk to the planning board, I I read this, but it does not answer that. So I'd have to talk to them, it's because if it's, if we, if you just can't by law, there's nothing we could do regardless of whether or not we want to issue a variance here. But I'm not sure what the planning board knows, or I mean, I wasn't sure, but you were planning here, so I didn't do a deep dive, but that was my general understanding. From the case law.
Well, it is a, it is a, a unique circumstance.
But this wouldn't matter, there'll be no circumstances that would be unique to this, the law is just strictly from my understanding that it cannot create. Non-performies with a conforming lot, however, this is something we'll have to look into, because again, this is informal, we have.
Yeah, there's no point arguing about it here, right now.
I understand it, but you know, what I read is a unique circumstance.
Well, that's for variance, this is different though, variance would be after the fact, so if you were able to do this, if this was something that would go before us and was allowed by law. Then you come for us for the variances for the frontage, however, what I'm suggesting is it might not be able to get to that point because it might be prohibited by law in the first place.
Though you're saying it isn't.
The planning board signed this plan. They have a no minus plan. That allows them to sign this plan, because we are. Zoning deficiencies. And then it's this. This plan is coming up in front of you. To hopefully grant your Suzas the variances.
Well, we have to make sure that it can though, that's what I'm saying, we have to make sure in the first place that it's something that can be done by law. And I'm not a hundred percent confident that the planning board would know one way or the other, but they might, and they might have done their homework on this, and it very well could be that. The planning board might have powers created to it that I'm unaware, since I have, none of us have researched this, that would allow them to override this law under special circumstances. Which this could possibly be applicable to that, I'm not sure, but we'd have to do a deep dive into this and look into it.
With that said. Let's just say they can do it.
Yeah, that's okay, that's a good way to start.
Hypothetical. Now you're looking for variance on these, the the frontage. And why would we be able to grant that?
Well. First of all, there shouldn't be two houses on.
So you can't. I I don't mean to stop you, but it can't be self-created, so anything, so the fact that houses are already there would go with associated fire and hardship. I I'm not cutting off to suggest, I'm just letting you know that that is something we have to follow, so just so you're aware. So for the variance, we would have to know something besides that dealing with the associated fire for the land, not exactly the.
Yeah, is there anything unique about the soil or the topography? Certainly not the shape, these, these are rectangles and this, there's nothing unique about that, but is there anything that?
Well, this.
I'm gonna say the answer is no.
This house is defined by a driveway and by a hedge, that's why. They would like to split it up like that. They don't want this house to have this much. Property that's, you're just gonna be, you're just gonna be wasted, it's not gonna, nobody's gonna take care of it in the future. And this piece of property, the mobile home. Is sitting on a finger of property. On the other side of Park Street.
Actually out of property in the first place. Park Street is actually out of property in the first place, that that sectionality.
All the, all this and all. Yep.
From, from the fire plug down to, all the way down to the pump house, I paid taxes on it.
But it's our property.
Yeah, I, I just found that out like a month ago.
So, so the, the, the question I'm, I'm asking is, is. The, these two, let's, let's just go with these two lots for the, for the time being. What makes this, what makes this lot unique where I would be able to say, I believe that, uh. That's so, so unique that the soil or the shape or the topography is, is unique. And makes it such that we should grant the variance for the, for the frontage.
Well, under those, you know, stipulations, there isn't any reason to grant it.
So.
Grant it here.
That's what we're up against.
I mean, you have seen this meeting, we had to tell two people no, the last person came to informal and planned this, like, well, you know. He's a very strict standard set by the state here, I'm, I'm familiar with this property. I, I don't see how that would be unique, how that, especially given that it's not probably separate lots, the same lot right now. I could subdivide that and then we say, oh, well, I I think it's not unique, it's a hardship. It'd be very hard for me, I'm, I'm just talking about lots three right here, that's one of the front, I don't know how I.
I'm not asking for a hardship.
We have to be, a variance requires a hardship.
I just, I just wanna have two lots coming in those.
These, these lots are okay, they have. We need the trailer and, yeah, and that's all, they have frontage, they're property. So you can.
It sounds like fire rate, yeah.
So then.
We can have.
I'm fine about that afterwards, but I want my, both of my daughters to have a lot next to my house.
It's the two that we need a variance, we need the trailer and this one, and basically we own this, so. Why we're arguing, we could just say, you know what, this is our property, so we're just gonna take. Part of it, and the town can't use it.
You're free to do that, I'm sure, so. Well, you're free to argue with that, you're here for this, you're here for informal with the zoning board, we're here telling you what you need, if you can go before us for a variance. I'm here telling you that, saw how difficult the variance is, it is all state statute, I don't see anything about those particular properties, to me, that would be a hardship. You just said yourself that you couldn't find something going to the sort of shape of the topography, so it'd be very hard for me to write a defenseless decision, we both agree that. We don't spine anything to even meet the first criteria.
And there are three, you're familiar with the three criteria? So, and they're conjunctive, you gotta meet them all, and so the very first one on lot number three is fatal. That wouldn't fly. Does that make sense?
I'll just consider extending. Park Street. And creating. Just to separate it away.
Sorry, say it down again?
What about this property, the mobile home size?
Same thing, I don't, I, I wouldn't know how to.
Plus it's on a minimum lot size too, so it's be two variances for that one.
Yeah.
These would be tough, these would be ones that I wouldn't, I would say if it's gonna be old, I'd be almost certain that it would come right back to us. And again, I personally, I I know that lot, there's nothing there, and I care less if there was a house, no, I think it'd probably be. And again, I personally, I, I know that lot, there's nothing there, and I care less if there was a house, no, I think it'd probably be, I'm sure you can build a beautiful house there. It's just, I have fall estate guidelines, which. I know, uh, we're not making best friends here tonight, it seems with a lot of people, and that's just unfortunate reality that. You know, I might think that these are all fine, dandy ideas, I just couldn't find a way to follow the law. Grant this probably, given what I've heard so far.
Yes, special permits, we have some leeway, we can say, yeah, it feels good, it's okay, nobody, nobody's gonna care, let's, sure, why not? Yes, you may. We can do that, with a special permit, variances are just a whole different thing. So, this is why I'm saying, that. This one is a, a non-starter, it's a nice rectangular lot, probably flat, and there's no frontage, and. There's nothing that would satisfy that first of the three conjunct, conjunctive criteria.
Well, if we don't extend Park Street. This lot is not conforming, because it only has a hundred feet of frontage.
But that's existing.
Yeah, it's already existing, yeah, you're fine, as long as it's predated zoning, you're fine, which is about most of the houses in town do, where they're spent, for those. There are different circumstances that apply, sometimes you just need a special permit, rather than a variance, to add on, but.
Yeah, if these were, if these had been divided in nineteen seventy-one, before zoning. You could do whatever you want with them at that point, they're not, it's now, and so. That's where we're at. The same thing, you're, it, as Alan pointed out, you, you've got two variances to, to work on here, frontage and lot size. Was this, is this an R, R, this is R one, right?
I believe R one, yeah.
Yeah, it's R one, you see, you need twelve thousand.
So you've got your, your five thousand square foot.
Okay, so you're saying the Suzes will never be able to separate that mobile home. Under the property, if they, if they wanna sell this property, the mobile home has to go with the. A one eighty-nine Park Street.
If, if someone wants to build on it, then I would say yes, that you are correct.
Everything is your property, you can force whoever you want, but, again, you're here for informal. We're just telling you what we think is the case, I mean, we could sugarcoat this for you, all sorts of ways, but. I, I want you to have all the information right now, and everything I'm hearing is, it'd be very difficult, so.
Set something by special permit, how, see, how would you grant a special permit for, see, in these circumstances?
Yeah, he's, he doesn't qualify.
So a special permit, we, again, wouldn't qualify, but that would be, like, let's say you already had a house here, and, um, let, let's just pretend that you were within. The zoning bylaws say you need twenty feet away from your neighbor, and you're within, wanna do something within, you're within fifteen already, you wanna do something within ten. Since you're already not conforming, you only need a special permit if you're just adding to an already existing non-conforming, but what you're suggesting. Would be things that would require variance, it's just a subdivide of that. And again, my, my first thing, though, I'm concerned that you wouldn't even be able to do this in the first place by law, before we even get to the zoning board, so I think everything we went over. That we've said, it'd be very difficult to grant the variances, but I, I would be even concerned about the ability to even get there. For service.
Other than these circumstances, there are. Planning board and the zoning board. Can, can.
We're, we're working with case law, we've been aboard, most of us for more than ten years, so. Um, I don't see anything, you know, in the case law we've had, you know, hundreds of decisions we've had, that I could find for this, but. You know, again, this is informal, if you feel differently, chairman would tell you to, whatever you can find, you can hire your chairman, you can find case law. You can contact us, of course, I, I'm not telling you yes or no right now, so I don't have all the information, but I'm just telling you how I feel based on what I'm seeing.
Yeah, I think Chris put it best, we're not trying to sugarcoat anything, we're just trying to give you the facts as we have them. And, again, if you're able to, we still need, need to find that out, even able to create. These lots in the first place, to create a non-conformity, we don't know, these folks seem to believe you can, okay, but we still. Need to do our diligence to make sure that that is true. If it is true, you still got a big problem with at least this one, and this one. All of them.
Yep. Yeah, this is. Back to probably dealing with two of that, because you've got the frontage and the square footage, for lots one and two.
What's that, Alan?
Lots one and two have the frontage and the square footage, so those would, would be fine.
Okay, so you'd be good, so no matter what, we said, yeah, as Alan said, the good news is one and two seem fine, so.
So, so.
And you should be able to subdivide that, because you wouldn't be creating any non-conformity, so it shouldn't be an issue. The problem, like I said, what typically the case law to be is that, you only can subdivide if you're creating a non-conformity, which you wouldn't be for one and two.
And so. Who lives here and who lives here?
Those would be the proposed subdivision lots right there.
So this is, would be daughter one and daughter two?
Yes.
Okay, and so then, what ends up happening is you have this pork chop lot right here, that ends up being one lot.
You know, so I think your worst case scenario would be, you would still have three lots, which is better than the one you have now, it sounds like.
And I don't know what you do with that, this finger lot, like you called it, it's a shame, I don't know what to tell you about that. Sort of walked in there.
Only thing to say is that the Suzes have been very, very, that passed.
We have no doubt, we have so many great people that come here that we are fortunate enough to know, we have to finalize. We, we're all residents of the town, none of us like telling residents from town, no. I think I can speak for all of us when I say that.
And you spent a lot of time and money on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, next, oh, are you still missing something? Barry Whitney?
My wife, Mary?
Hey.
My wife, Mary, doing as well?
Yeah. Hey, folks. Where are you? All right, what you wanna do?
So, we are also against the height restriction on a accessory garage.
Which we now know is fifteen feet, we just learned that.
Um, so we bought a property about three years ago, Chase Street. It's a, it's a normally two acre lot, um, pretty unique for the town of Clinton, we subdivided it, we have a eighteen thousand square foot lot. On Chase Street, we have a hammerhead that goes back to a fifty-eight thousand square foot lot. Um, we are building a house currently, the whole goal in having a big lot, we both grew up on less than five thousand square feet. Our first house was on seven thousand square feet, our second house is on ten, this is like for us. So, you know, and one of the whole goals was I want a big garage, so. We're currently building the house, and I went to, to get a permanent garage, and Jimmy said, we got a height problem. Jimmy said, okay, um, how do I go about that, and someone suggested we go into a furniture, so. We wanna build a thirty-six by forty-eight garage, that is twenty-nine feet tall, we're currently building.
Warehouse animals.
To be.
Warehouse animals.
Um, at, at this point, no.
Okay.
Could it?
It could, yeah.
House animals.
As agriculture, this.
There are some.
Everything evolves.
So.
This is on the fifty-eight thousand foot lot?
Fifty-eight thousand square foot lot, yes.
So you're building a barn?
Building a, building a, what I would say is more than a barn.
Put some chickens in it, and your height requirement.
Yeah, yeah, it says right here, if it's dedicated to agriculture, horticulture, or floriculture, there's no height restriction.
So I, I think you just heard the last four people we talked to, and if you did, you're probably not feeling great about what we would probably. Be about to tell you, we are in the fifteen foot requirement, um, requirement. That one's very difficult, because unless there's something very unique about the lot, that you couldn't build this. Without making it certain height. It'd be very hard for us to grant.
I, 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 I have to ask, right, I've been in town my entire life, just bear with me, right, so. Um, you know, this is a unique lot, there, there are not fifty-eight thousand square foot lots in Clinton. Very often, we, we, we sit down off the road, we have a hill behind us, we're building a, a, a new home, a, a relatively large lot. I'm, I'm a business in town, I drive around the lot, and, and, and I see, and I know people that have these structures. That live, quite honestly, never have even had come, come before you guys, they, why they didn't have to.
I was gonna say approximately to other non-conformities, the fact that other people have non-conformities, so I think we're allowed, I'm, I'm just. I've been the bearer of a lot of bad news today, I figure. So, yeah. I'm just saying this so you know, trust me, I haven't gone.
I will get chickens.
Right here.
Other, so, so, this is what we're hoping to do, and basically we're saying is, make it a horticultural agricultural use. And, and, do I need to come in front of you for that, or did Jimmy just grab that?
That was right in the zoning bylaws, there's no restriction on height if it's agriculture.
As long as it's dedicated to that, you know, if you had two percent house agriculture, and ninety-eight was a man cave, uh. You know, whatever, we'd say, well, no, of course, but, um, as long as, you know, recently dedicated to agriculture. You could of course have, you know, a dartboard in there or something too, but if, you know, that has to be the primary purpose, of course, but. And if you came for us for variance, my first thing would be, yes, maybe your lot's unique because of the, you know, it's been his job for Clinton, but then your second part would be, well. How does that uniqueness factor into you needing to build a twenty, whatever?
Well, we, so, one, one of the things that you look at is for, for major recreational vehicles, right? So we have a, a, we're fortunate enough to, to, to have a, a large boat. Um, within, within the, the zoning bylaws, um, under thirty-two, thirty-three. Um, no major recreational equipment or vehicle should be stored in any lot of residential district that has accessory use, other than in a carport or a closed building. Or behind the front building line, the principal building, provided whoever has such equipment or vehicle may be parked anywhere for seven to two hours.
So you're gonna store your boat in the, uh, in the, in the barn?
Yes, and then one of the British issues is that, that boats on trailers with, with solid roofs and, and radar. Become relatively tall, so I have twelve foot walls, and on a ten pitch, the reason I'm on a ten pitch is I have. Three gables on the house that are all ten pitch.
Yep.
The house is, the house is about twenty-six feet, but this would be twenty, twenty-nine feet.
Yeah, so the, the agricultural angle, it's gotta be legit, you know? I was only half joking with the, with the, with the chicken thing.
Right, no, I, 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 I heard that, but honestly, I don't know, you know, I.
I mean, do you do your own landscaping and all that stuff, I mean, I'm just thinking you wanna park a, do you have a little tractor?
So I, I, actually, in, in my, my, we actually filed for a formal for next month, and I did put in, mention in there that. Um, it was mostly. Where did I put that little box, there it is. I said, primary accessory garage is for storage of a major recreational vehicle, and such equipment in the, other such equipment in vehicles. We do plan on having, having a farm tractor, a small tractor for, for our property. You know, that, that is one of the goals we don't have on today.
Just now, if you did, again, it would have to be primary purpose, so you can have other stuff, but. You know, that'd be the way you would be skirting around a lot, would be primary purpose, uh, and you can't connect to the house, because then you could have three.
So that, so here's, here's the hardship, I could, I, I'm gonna be, basically, this lot, just to, 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 to give you some dimension, only because I put so much work in. You got this, right, uh, you know, we're, we're basically, we're a couple of hundred, hundred feet off the road, right? We are, I'm, all my setbacks are, are met, my left setback is forty-two. My, and we're gonna have, the garage is, is normally forty, fifty between the house and the garage, eighty foot house, and forty on the other side. I'm not even near, I'm not even close to anybody, my closest neighboring house is a hundred feet away. The, the three people that, that, that would live, that, that are neighboring this building, that could potentially be affected by it, um. One of them happens to be one of my coworkers, who we actually cut off a small piece of land, and, and, and he has a bigger yard now. One is Doug Price, who's on the planning board, who I saw today, he said, tell them right away, you know, you're not gonna fall with me, and the other guy's a hundred and fifty feet away. So it, it, no one could be negatively affected by this, I could. You know, to put this fifty feet away, I need to be able to pack it in my garage, this is the garage right here, I could put this fifty feet away and attach it. But now I have a hardship, now I have to spend.
But all this sounds too like, you know, from a, from the variance point of view, the three variances, you have, speaking for myself, you have an argument for the shape, size, and topography. Because it is unique for this area, and clearly the third one, you know, there's no detriment, so it's really just a second con- condition of, you know, hardship. Having arguments for hardship.
The hardship would be hard.
Yeah.
So I went to, I went to Jim today, and I said, Jimmy, you know what, I'm just gonna go ahead and attach this, I'm gonna build, I'm gonna build a covered walkway. Between the, between this, this building and that building, it's gonna cost me twenty-five or thirty thousand bucks. I can't put the buildings together, the way we're situated, the house-to-house foundation is in. I, I can't situate anything differently, so I can attach these two buildings, they, they've gotta be real, they've gotta be separate. Could I build that structure and spend money? Yeah, then, then I could just do it as a matter of right, because they're, they're attached. Why do I have to spend that one? Isn't that a hardship?
Well, it would be a hardship that anyone who bought this property would not be able to get use of their land. So we wouldn't say, well, anyone bought this property, if they built their garage fifty feet away, that'd be hard for them, it'd be, no, they can build the house, they could build. Whatever they want onto the house, so this would be very tough or hardship, based on what you're saying, how high it is, unless. Uh, I think as the chairman said, if, if there's any way you can make these agricultural to a large extent. At least from what I'm seeing, that, preferable.
They were gonna get chickens.
And you wouldn't come before us, and this would be up to you and the building inspector to determine, he would determine whether he or she.
Is this agriculture, that's what he would have to.
Yeah, we'd have to convince him.
So, he's the only one who has a say.
We don't come, you wouldn't come before us, we wouldn't say, well, this side, how, what percentage are you using this side, that would be, wouldn't be like that. Um, and we're obviously not telling you to skirt the law or anything like that, but if you genuinely plan, and you have a lot of land, if you genuinely plan to some sort of agriculture, this. That would be your best bet here, I would say, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but the hardship would be tough here, but I, we're all just told. I hate to make it the fifth person, I'm gonna tell the same thing too, but that's gonna be, it's gonna be difficult, because this should be anyone who bought the land, I think this is great, I think that house. The land, the fact you bought that much land, you're just looking to put one house, like, I think it's fantastic, I love the idea.
Yep.
I love the project idea, fantastic too, but.
You, the rest of your land, in your area, not your land, the other land, and that's all, what, industrial, or is it?
Where, where I am.
Yeah.
So behind, behind me, there's a, there's a non-buildable lot that extends about twelve hundred square, twelve hundred feet back.
This is on Chase.
Yeah.
This is on Chase.
There's no industrial area there.
No industrial, it's all, it's all residential, but there's a big, there's a big empty lot out back that has no frontage, you know.
You don't even have enough land, you can just build a second house there, that'd be, do you have, do you have enough land that, so you don't need much land in Clinton? I, I don't know how much I, I didn't want that.
No, it's, it's fifty-eight thousand square feet, so I, I, you know, I, I, in the beginning, we wanted, said, we thought about, there was a, there was a, on the street. We thought about going ahead, and we, 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 real estate as well, we have a colony in Clinton, which is oil, and we have, we have multifacets in town. So we had thought about, let's, let's, let's go ahead and, or multifamily, or subdivide it, and, and sell, sell the lots, and we came to the conclusion that, you know, why, hey, why don't we live here? Um, and, and one of the things was, what, when I, when I see what, what we have in town, that, that doesn't even fit. Um, and, and then I have something like this that fits absolutely perfectly. It, 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 I gotta admit, it's pretty hard to accept, and, and for me to, to make up stories that, that, or to become a farmer when I never planned on being one. You know, I don't have the time, I don't have the time to do what I already, um, just quite discovered it, what else?
Uh, yeah, I think it's great, I think the barn, I like, I, it works with the house, unfortunately, that's just not criteria we have, that we have to follow.
But, you know, that, that criteria, you look at that criteria, you know, that criteria is, is, has to be, had to be based on something at one point in time. And had to be fact, I would assume, I'm not a land expert by any means, but you would, I would have thought that potentially that criteria would be based on the fact that we have. Very, very small lots of town, my parents' lot was four thousand square feet, I think, Mary's was five thousand, something like that. You, you, you know, accessory structure, you know, thirty feet tall, a small lot like that, blocking everyone's view, or whatever it might be, encroaching. Yeah, it doesn't make sense, so that, that, that becomes a problem. For, for me, because we have a, and I love Jim Sammer, by the way, and I'm glad he's doing his job correctly, but. My right by some of these other buildings, that, there's, there's two of them, three of them right on Chase Street. One of them built two thousand and eighteen. One of them built two thousand eighteen. It, I, 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 I would think that there's, there's gotta be a way. It's attached it.
Taxes the easy way, you know, it's coming for us, we don't have to say it in one way or the other, that, uh, this.
If I had a straw vote today, is it, is it reasonable and is, is this, to, to, for our first straw votes?
Well, we, we wouldn't have more if we, for foremost, we're not.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't.
We don't have the public or anything.
Again, I'm not, I'm not saying it isn't, I'm just asking.
I'm just telling you it's tough, the hardship is tough. Yeah, we, we don't get paid to be here, I feel like today is just so much better. You, no, yeah, yeah, that's just me, I can't speak for everyone else, but.
Community service, my place that community service.
This one makes total sense to me though, a lot, a lot of the ones we get don't, you know, you can kinda just see it on its face, so clearly this is not meant for this town. Clearly the planning board didn't mean for exception to be included for this, whereas this one, I'll give it to you since the lot is so large, um.
Yeah, we could, we could, that's usually what most people have the most difficulty with, is that first one, is the uniqueness of the lot. And so we, at least I do, and I believe you do too, and others on the board would say, yeah, I agree, it's unique. And others, all, all through the whole town, growing a lot, so that makes it unique. And then the third criteria, uh, is it detrimental? The answer is no, as a matter of fact, probably enhances things. Um, but there are three of those criteria that we have to meet, and we have to, that, it's our job, and so, you know.
I hope you understand hardship, yeah.
So it'd be, um, like, like, oh, in a soil shaped topography, in this case of the land, there'd be a substantial hardship to any person who would purchase this land. Basically meaning that if any individual were to buy this land, they would not be able to make reasonable use of the land but for the zoning board, raising the variance. The whole, the whole purpose of variance is saying, when the planning board made these rules, they clearly didn't need for it to apply to this person because there's something so different about their lot that if they saw that lot, they'd say, well, that'd be silly to enforce these rules.
Sounds like this.
So it says, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw. So again, so this is, this comes from the state, it's not the town, as an ordinance would be for a city, bylaws for the town. A literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner.
You know, I don't know if hardship would be, you know, paying hardship on taxes for land you can't use, you know, that's an argument you'd probably, you know, have to run by someone other than us, well.
It's a very good example. You know, I can't, so now I'm, I've got this huge lot, now I can't use it.
If he's gonna spend twenty five or thirty thousand dollars.
I can't do anything.
That's an issue.
That's a self-imposed hardship. You can't use that.
I will tell you, if we don't, if we're not able to do this, I'm going to watch things much more closely than I've ever watched things, cause I'll tell you, you know, gonna run a long time, long enough, and I see a lot of people most enjoy laughing at and saying, we never had to do that.
Well, trust me, we unfortunately don't make people happy here on a everyday basis. If you watch our meetings, as you saw today, uh, and there's not a single person who came here today where I personally thought that their proposal was bad for the neighborhood of town. I thought they all would have been fine, but as you can see, that, I'm sure that's not a difference maker, but if you guys can find a way to, like, I think we said, I, for me, one in three are in it, can you get hardship or can you find something in the alternative? Could you, you know, could you plant a garden, could you store some stuff in there? But you know, that's the stuff you'd have to talk to Jim about, um, could you find a way to, you know, I don't wanna say hire a lawyer or something like that, but you know, look up some case law and, um, we're not experts on everything here, we, you know, but we've all been here for a while for the most part, and, um, we have to follow these, cause we have to follow for, if I had to tell you yes, we would have told that person, we had a branch yes too. We had someone else that wanted.
It's not necessarily true, I mean, that, that, you know, I don't know, I'm a person, person, this is why this is extremely unique property. I, I get it, I get it, I appreciate your time.
Okay.
And, uh, so is your suggestion that we do not come for a formal next month?
I can't make that suggestion one way or the other.
I thought, I thought I heard Mr. McDonald say that earlier.
I, I can't, I mean, if you can find a way to find a hardship, um, you're here formally, we haven't heard everything from us.
Yeah, if there's nothing else to add, then I would say you're probably wasting your time. If you have more to add and you can, it's number two on the list, if you can satisfy that somehow. Or, I know you don't wanna do that, but do the whole agricultural thing.
It's, but it's. They tend to be, you know, I'm a Catholic guilt guy, right? St. John's Church.
No, I, I believe, I, you're, you're preaching to the choir.
Yeah.
On that one, so I, I do like, and it's, it kinda falls back on the whole, what you just said is, I gotta do my job here. That's what we're, we've been brought to do, and sometimes we have to be the bad guy, kinda crummy.
And again, I, I think that's one of the best projects I've seen here, we've, I've been here more than ten years, I think that's all very great. So maybe you can figure out something that.
We've bought and sold homes every home we've done, it was never a matter of how much money we do, it made us, it made us sound bad, everything we've done, property, I mean, it's everything we've done.
Do some case law digging, look into that, you know, and you, you might find something that says, hey, this, this circumstance. Yeah, I mean, yeah, you could find a case so, and, and maybe it's very similar to yours, you say, hey, maybe they don't know about this. We definitely might not, cause there's a million cases out there, we don't know everything, so he finds that every property is unique, so, you know.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, good luck. You're welcome. All right, next is Tom Land. Finally, a special permit. No? All right, so Tom Land's not here, okay? Yeah. Uh, Joshua Morengara. If I pronounced that incorrectly, I apologize. How do you pronounce that last name? Mogera?
Yeah.
Very good, okay, so what do you wanna do?
A little bit new to this, sorry, first of all, too congested, the allergies. But yeah, I'm a little bit new to this, so this is the first time, uh, having said that, I'm, uh, I've been doing construction for a while. And I currently am building, uh, fourteen Chester Street, right down the street. And, uh, my question was regarding the lot three other street. I wanted to do same thing that I'm doing on, uh, fourteen Chester Street right now, which is a condominium, uh, two of them, uh, side by side, uh, more like a duplex. You know, so, yeah, and the square foot on the lot right now is around seven thousand five hundred.
Seven thousand?
Yeah.
That's all, that's all.
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, it's off on the lower end, um, the lot is adjusted, adjusted to five, um, other street, which is owned by the same person. So I need some guidance on that, again, I'm new to this, so.
You said the lot is owned by the same people, lot next door?
Yeah, next door.
So would that be combined?
Uh, all of it is non-conforming.
It is, it's under seven thousand.
I can look at that. Both of them separate. Yeah.
Yeah. Cause of, cause of that, that combines.
I think, I put me wrong, I think the new lot too, is the lot has to be over ten and twelve to not. You said it's seven?
It's, uh, seven thousand five hundred.
Oh, so it's too small.
And that's not too, because you need, let's just say, you wouldn't, you wouldn't need technically eighteen thousand square feet to build a two family there, so it would be very hard for us to say, hey, you know, the, maybe we'll grant the variance for a single family, twelve, at least for me, this is how I would feel, but to then say, you know, you're that far off, you're not even within ten thousand feet, get a two family. Yeah, that'd be tough variance.
Is there, um, a suggestion, like, if I was to proceed with that, is, is that just a lot that I should just make a pop for?
Could you build a single family on it?
Single family is too simple.
So, so what Alan said, there, there's a chance, we'd have to look into this, that that lot is actually going to be considered the same lot as the owner you mentioned behind it.
Yeah.
There, we're not sure, we'd have to look into this, but.
Yes, separately deeded.
They're separately deeded, okay, there, there's this thing in Massachusetts called the doctrine merger, basically a long time ago, the Commonwealth, the legislature, they said, we don't want these non-conforming lots, so if the same people own two lots that are connected, and let's say one's not conforming, we're just gonna say that's part of their lot. But we don't know here, but that, as Alan said, that's potential here, and if that is the case, that means you wouldn't be able to build anything, so it'd just be considered one lot. If it's not, I would say personally, your best bet would be to come here for variance for single family. Because it would be very hard to grant to two family, but, you know, you're, you're in a single family prior variance, but traditionally, if you have a lot that you couldn't otherwise build on, and you're above the five thousand foot state threshold minimum, we'd be more inclined to say that, okay, you'd have, you would have hardships, you wouldn't be able to build on it, uh, due to the size and shape of the lot, so we'd be more inclined to grant. I couldn't tell you for sure, we'd have to do some research on this to figure out. Does that, that's kinda confusing, I understand, does that make sense?
Yeah, it's pretty much, okay, move to this.
Right.
But yeah, yeah, I think that's about it. Appreciate it.
You did a nice job on that house down there.
Thank you.
Looks better than it did.
Yeah, it was, uh, messed up, so. Uh, actually, five other street is the same thing, so probably knock it down and redo it.
And if you have questions too, Ward, send, um, Jim, Jim's still at work?
Yeah.
Jim won't be here till the end of school.
Okay, okay, so feel free, cause they can always, if you have a question, they can always email us, and then we can get at, you know, if so. But we'll have to look into that merger thing, that would be, I'd be curious about that.
So that's, that's three Arthur Street?
It's the one right on me.
Right across the old round nursing home there, on the side of the street.
Okay.
Yeah, I drive by it every day.
And there's just, uh, what's that?
I'd like to give you guys the opportunity to make a friend tonight. Nice to see you guys.
Special permits.
So, some of you guys, if you're maybe remembering, I don't know, you guys, Eric, you know, I, we have.
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, and this is hardship because I got an eight hundred fifty thousand dollar mortgage and I need tenants.
Yeah.
These guys are, do amazing lot work, they have Charlotte Worcester, they work, work here, so I just have, we're gonna get on tomorrow, we're gonna get on the official, I guess they have. So I have two questions, is there anything that we need to do to conform and more prepared for you guys for the tenant? And secondly, the spray boot that he's putting in there, it's seventeen feet wide, and I'm wondering, and, and this here is just under fifteen feet. So it's shorter than the thirty six normal necessity for egress, it's just a tent inside the garage.
Yeah.
So my question is, do we need to follow that rule, as insane as thirty six wide, to be able to get back to the electrical panel?
Inside the building?
Yes, inside the garage.
You're gonna have to talk to the building inspector.
And I mean, I built this, this commercial, so I put a wall on several years, I have a CEO sensors, I have smoke, I have all that stuff, so I don't think it'll be an issue as far as putting that business in there. I just didn't know if there was any kind of things that you guys would, any information or you could educate us on what we could do to better fit for the tenant.
I don't think so, so it, it's not a, you're not changing news.
No, but he needs, he needs a special permit from us to do any more people, anything in a commercial zone, so it's just, you know, coming, you know, we've got others that have been saying, you know, we wanna do.
When you're going down High Street and you turn the left, there's a four car.
Just a special for autumn.
Just on Allen Street. Oh, you're, you're good, from where you are. Yes. Talk to them, because they did a classic building there. They might have some ideas for you.
So I don't think you need, I don't, I think you're fine, come get this, you need a special permit.
Okay, then, then, then I'll, that would be a question for Jim as far as to be able to get back to the building.
Yes, sir.
Did we make a friend?
Yeah, we saved.
Edition a cop? Let's see, let's see on June.
Thank you so much, John.
A bunch of Christmas cards, they sent after the night. I was looking at, when I saw the list today, I'm like, oh, this is just gonna be. Cause everything makes sense. I feel bad for, to bury because you, you just gotta come up with it, come up with the defense for that hardship, and you just gotta convince us.
Yep, if, if I were handling mine, I would hire a lawyer. Hire a lawyer, something, then you can at least make an argument to us in a way. We're, we're reasonable guys. Yeah, that's, you wouldn't know it from watching today.
Give Barry that information.
And he said it wasn't?
I just wrote up everything you did, I know more about. The one thing was a downspout. Here's the house in the downspout.
First, how many votes would he need?
Talking about Barry.
Barry, like if he came back and said, you know, so it's four out of five, okay, so super majority then.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's.
Like I said, I think if he can find a good attorney with a good.
Yeah.
Example and.
Find something that you can bring to us that.
That we can write down and say, there's our defense.
Cause that, we all agree, he meant one, which is very hard, cause that property actually is.
Yeah, it's unique.
Yeah, and no one's gonna care with that thing in back, like he, like he said, I bet they made the bylaw because all the houses are next to each other.
Jimmy DeGoyne was still in business, he did, Jimmy would, he hired Jimmy, Jimmy would sell the case right here in front of us.
That's what, yeah.
Believe me, he's done it before.
I assume he has funds, he owns with you.
Oh, no, he's good.
No, he sells them. Or he does his homework, but.
He's a, he's a great, you know, he's a, he's a, he's a good citizen.
Yeah, that's the worst thing too, we've had it till, everybody people know, you know, I, I don't feel good leaving here today. A lot of people are probably like that, choice word.
Are you glad I did that speech beforehand?
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's almost like, we need to have like a flashing thing that goes with every application, if you're doing a variance, read this flashing document.
Well, I'm prepared for a no.
Yeah.
I know the answer's no, we'll see what we can do.
If you're guilty until, you're innocent of proven guilty on variance is your guilt.
Got a lot off Wilson Street. I had bought the land on Earl and Stone, and it went like eight hundred feet back, and then just went this way on one side, so she was doing it, and there was, there was a woman that was on the zoning and saying, I'm gonna subdivide.
Works, how's everything?
And she was somebody's wife.
Appreciate it, it's good to hear that after, uh.
I felt bad for her husband. And I was going on and I was like, this, this is, we'll stop you from building. I says, you can, but I'm looking at a piece of paper saying.
Be easier if I could say. I don't care. Your neighbors down here complaining.
And it's, it's a.
Signatures.
It's not this wide, it's two hundred and fifty feet wide, two hundred and fifty feet. And I said, I'm building a twelve unit apartment house. Why would you do that?
Cause I can.
Father gets, got some signatures.
Oh, yeah, this, she just sat here and now we still have to pay her.
Do you wanna send this to me, me an email, did you already do that? For review, yeah, because I don't wanna keep us all here for. Okay.
First one, that's the hardship.
That's the last time, she, especially with February.
It was. I was gonna say, I thought it was still very hard.
Yeah, we signed three.
Okay. Usable land, that I paid fixed.
Yeah, go ahead, send it over this way.
Find someone to talk to the planning board about that whole, and I'll pick up the case law, I remember the term was infectious invalidity, it's like this old sixteen hundred bridge case law. I remember the term was infectious invalidity. It's like this old sixteen hundred British case law I came here, basically said. And there's a case of Brookland, which I believe is the leading case, saying you cannot subdivide, and we've, a lot of people that look at this, you can't subdivide Washington, it's.
Well, you know what I was surprised with, Chris? I've been in front of the planning board a couple times in the last few months, and they don't make things easy. And I'm surprised that they took a conforming lot and created four non, five non-conforming lots. I'm like.
Yeah, why?
I'm like, I'm missing something.
Yeah, me too. I was, I'm just like, wait a second.
Although, you know what I think too, I think it's.
Prove not required.
It's kick it to.
Yeah.
Let's kick it to us, let now, let us.
Say no, yes.
But could that be the easy way to do it? So let's make us the bad.
How can you get five non-conforming lots out of one conforming?
Forget it.
A sense of dust.
I don't know who it was, I don't know what the thing was. And he's like, she just, she just looked at me and was like. Perception will get from people sometimes.
Yeah. That's why I was, I I wanted. You know, that's why I said. Somebody convinced me that this lot is uniquely safe, because it doesn't look like it to me. And then that kinda, I'm hoping opens up the door for the further discussion of, this is not, we can't approve this.
Which, yeah, I was glad when you said, so it's like, I'd be a lot there too, when I remember. And the frontage for that Bird Hill one too.
My good buddy.
And he even said, you know, you ask him, is there anything so shit by me? No, there's not.
Yeah. Why, why would I, why would I vote for this?
Yeah, well, you know, wait for things.
Will be the answer, and and I'll tell you.
Yeah.
Agree, there's nothing on there. And then the answer is, there is none.
We might need it after today.
You both can come if you want.
Was this recorded? Okay, right. Oh, wait a minute, so.
Why don't you leave that recorded with us and we'll get it back to you.
Alright, it's nine oh three, and this meeting is adjourned.